Can you bring anybody I know?
No.
Partner of his.
Okay, all right, folks. Our little red light's on there. Welcome, everyone, this evening. And I'll call the meeting to order. And would you like to join us in the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Teresa, could we get a roll call?
Councilor Olson.
Here.
Collins.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Callen.
Here.
Kupinski.
Here.
Kilburn.
Here.
Mayor Pinot.
Here. Okay. And first on the agenda is a proclamation this evening. And this is one of our special events that we do hold each year around the holidays. And this is Homeless Persons Memorial Day for December 21st, 2015. Whereas every member of society, including individuals experiencing homelessness, deserves the dignity of safe, decent, accessible, and affordable housing. And whereas winter poses extreme hardship for inadequately housed, low-income men, women, and children in Albany. And whereas, in this season of generosity and sharing, citizens of Albany are encouraged to commit themselves to promoting compassion and concern for all people, especially those who are poor and homeless. And whereas, in remembering those who have died without homes, the cause of ending homelessness remains urgent to prevent such deaths in the future. And whereas, the shortest day of the year has been designated National Homeless Persons Memorial Day by the National Coalition for the Homeless and the National Health Care for the Homeless Council, and is recognized by cities nationwide. Now, therefore, I Sharon Kanopa, Mayor of the City of Albany, Oregon, do hereby proclaim December 21st, 2015, as Homeless Persons Memorial Day. In Albany, Oregon, in recognition of the people who have died on our streets, in our emergency shelters, and in condemned or abandoned properties from ailments or conditions directly related to homelessness, I hereby ask all citizens to take a moment of silence in remembering those who have died homeless, and encourage our citizens to support local efforts to eliminate homelessness here. In witness whereof, I hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed the seventh day of December, 2015. Whoops, it's the second day. We had moved this up two days. Oh, no, today is the seventh, yes. Months flying by. Okay. With that, we do have our homeless memorial event is next Monday, and that's going to be at 5:30.
Two Mondays from now.
Oh, it's two Mondays. That's right. Right. Yeah. I'm kind of rushing a bit. Two Mondays at 5:30. And it's a Monday, and it's going to be outside on the plaza. And this is a very nice event. We have really lost a lot of homeless in our community this year, so we probably could have almost a record amount of names that we will be recognizing this year. So I welcome everyone and hope everybody can come and attend that event. Okay. Next on the agenda is business from the public. Is there anyone here that would like to bring an item for? Yes, Bill?
Members of the council, my name is Bill Root, R-OT. I live at 2634 Northwest Valley View in North Albany. Just wanted to let everybody know what a great toy run we had this last Sunday. The paper was pretty accurate, really. We had 211 people sign in. And you know how sign-ins go, there's always some that don't. And so it said over 200, well, it was easily over 200, probably closer to 3. It's if we had 500 to over 500 toys, and probably closer to 800 toys. All the kids that were there got at least two toys and a stuffed animal. Some of them got three or four, depending on how eager they were. Got to sit on Santa Claus's lap, get a bag of candy. And Sharon will witness that there was a lot of smiling faces that both the people that were involved in doing it and the kids that were getting the toys. So it was a great day. And somebody upstairs looked down on us, and it stopped raining about 9:30, and didn't rain again until it was all done. So we got to thank them for that. One of the things in the paper it said was probably one of the biggest, or maybe the largest turnout we've ever had. And it is that. Last year was a good turnout, too, but we had a big turnout this year, too. So, great. And thanks to the city for their help and participation. Sharon Kanopa did a good job of coming out there, and we thank you for your continued support.
Yep. Well, thank you, Bill, and you. And I really noticed over the years that all of you that are organizing it are just getting it down to a science. And it just, everything flows real well.
Yeah. We've got a good group of people that are dedicated to doing this. And I've been doing it since 2000, so I've been, I've got 15 years involved in it. And I'm a newbie.
No, it was wonderful. I just, I was almost panicking, though, when some of the motorcycles followed you coming through town. And I only saw about 30 come in, and I thought, oh, no. We've got all those kids in there, we're going to have to go buy some toys. And then all of a sudden, here comes the wave following the fire truck.
Yeah. What happened was, one group, the interstate group, they didn't go out and parade with the rest of them. They got down behind me and went in through Highway 20, and just went through the lights and everything. And they did a pretty good job.
Yeah.
And they showed up down there, and I just turned a corner, and here comes the fire truck. So same timeframe.
Yeah, it was great. But that's the most toys I've ever seen.
Yeah, it was huge. And whatever that didn't get distributed, we gave to the Salvation Army. And so that'll be distributed through their toy drive.
Oh, that's great. Such a great event.
All right.
Really thank you. Really thank you for all your hard work on it.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, it's great. But, yeah, questions?
And I expected to see Betsy Johnson out there, but she didn't show up.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'm sorry I didn't make it, but I do want to commend you and your group for doing this because it is so needed and appreciated. And like the mayor says, you guys have got it down to a science. And next year.
Next year, okay. We'll look forward to it.
Yeah.
Mayor, I did, I think my ears are playing tricks on me. I thought he said that you got to sit on Santa's lap?
No, no, no.
I was, I'm glad, that just brought way too many bad thoughts.
Just the children.
Oh, good.
Thank you for it.
So I, but I-
That's one back at you.
There it is.
I was kind of challenged to next year's riding on one of the motorcycles from, through the parade. And I said, I might consider it if it's not raining.
Well, you know, let me expound on that. Couple of years ago, I went back to Washington, DC for what they call Run for the Wall. And that was at Memorial Day weekend. And the governor of Alaska was there. And she says, can I be in your parade? And a guy in charge says, if you can find a motorcycle that lets you sit on the back, yep, you can be in the parade. And so she did.
Oh, wow.
So Sharon will hold you onto that.
Yeah. Well, then yesterday, we had the parade, you know, which it was, and, you know, the car, and it was raining on us in the parade.
Yeah.
You lucked out.
It held off after, for the toy run, but it didn't hold off for your parade.
Yeah, that's for sure. But, oh, it was a great parade last night. I think it's the biggest turnout I've ever seen. And so it was, it was wonderful parade, but I couldn't believe how much it rained throughout the whole time.
Yeah.
Yeah. But great turnout, so, thank you, Bill.
Well, thank you.
Uh-huh, thank you. Anyone else from business from the public? So, yeah, Tom?
Tom Cordier, 2240 Northwest Park Terrace in Albany. I heard and read the agenda tonight about the memorial on the shortest day of the year. And that may be a, I classify that rightly or wrongly as a feel-good event. When we talk about the number of people, homeless people, who died this summer, one of those was a young man who I'd worked with for over a year. And he had been in jail 10 times, been in court, in both city court and county court a number of times. Had a mental health counselor, had a mental health doctor, had a probation officer, had a mental health professional at the jail classify him 10 times as a paranoid schizophrenic. And he didn't die because of the hot weather. There was an article in the paper. Someone on city staff claims that they know that most of these deaths this summer were a result of hot weather. I was waiting for the next sentence that blamed that on global warming. It is nonsense that it happened because of hot weather. And the idea that these people know how to stay warm when it's cold, but the hot weather is really hard on them, I believe is nonsense. And so we have a large mentally ill population in our homeless ranks that the system does not know how to deal with effectively. They do what they do, but they don't deal effectively with the mentally ill. And we don't talk about that. In your statement tonight, I don't believe there was any reference to the mentally ill, and they are the dominant population. I dealt with a probation officer who refused to accept the diagnosis of the Lynn County mental health professional at the jail. He said, this kid, who was 23 years old, is not mentally ill. He just needs to be more accountable. The kid was mentally ill. And the system refused to recognize that. And this idea that we have a probation officer that's going to keep this kid on track, five times out of 10, when he showed up, when I drove around the city to help him get his appointments, all it was was a sign-in. He just had to go in the front door and sign a piece of paper. There was nobody in probation who was saying, how's it going? Where are you living? Are you still at signs of victory? Or are you living under a bridge? How's it going with you? And so there may be this event that comes up, and I suppose people will go to that, but it's a misuse of time and energy. There's a lot more that can be done. Another short example. We finally got an enrolled in Cover, Oregon, and he was assigned a doctor in Corvallis. Now, this kid has no driver's license. He has no money. He has an ID card, only an ID card, from the DMV that we finally got him. And the system assigns him a doctor in Corvallis as his primary guy. And when he, I was with him with his counselor, and he said, well, how am I supposed to get to Corvallis? She said, I don't know. That's your problem. And then it came out, well, we've got coupons that we could give you for the Albany bus system. And I asked, why can't we get him a doctor assigned here in Albany? And the answer was, well, if he wants to do that, he'll have to find a telephone and go and call them and ask for a different physician to be his primary care guy in Albany. Is that helpful, or what? He has no telephone. We actually got him a cellphone, and he lost it one day later. So the mentally ill part of this homeless thing is not being addressed adequately. And I know it's a hard problem. I just, I bring that to your attention because there's another whole layer here that isn't getting talked about. Any questions?
No.
Thank you.
I agree.
Is there anyone else from business from the public? Okay. Oh, yes, sir?
Is there a vote?
Yep, just a-
We know about the homeless now?
So, oh, this is actually just, this would be any topic right now, if there's any, if there's certain business that the city needs to look at.
I helped them do.
You'll have to state your name.
Don't recognize any of your names yet.
Yeah, you'll need to state your name and furnish your address.
I'm Robert Mitchell Daniels.
What was that, sir?
Robert Mitchell Daniels. I came here in about '69. I've been a neighbor all my life.
And what would you like to ask us about, or?
I'd like to address, you guys are talking about this homeless problem that we're having.
Well, this isn't actually a discussion for the homeless problem. This was just-
I just heard what he was saying, that's the only thing I heard.
This was just, we had just announced that we were having our Homeless Day Memorial Day in two weeks. So he just made a comment about homelessness.
Oh, okay. So, well, I'd like to, just, what if I just say this? I like to see the neighborhood change a little bit. Really don't recognize any of your faces. I don't know what you're going to do with these homeless people, but, you know, the answer's not, not keep pushing them out of their little campgrounds and parks and push them down by the river. I mean, I have residents where I live. And, you know, I'll see what's going on out there. And, you know, ticket after ticket, you're giving these guys, which they can't afford to pay the ticket city, huh? They say they're going to go through the courts, you've got to throw them in jail for a couple of days. And I found myself here today, I'm not always sure, but there's got to be a reason.
Okay.
Pretty much what we need to do. Get back to basics. It's a simple problem. Anybody that are here getting paid to be here? Raise your hand.
Don't need to ask that. If you have anything you'd like to ask, you'd ask it to me, please.
Sharon Kanopa, the mayor. Well, I don't know you personally, Sharon, but how you got elected, but I have known many of the mayor's. Reddick. Well, I don't know, but we have a couple of judges.
Do you have a question for us?
Yes, I do. How's the address of these homeless people? Well, if you don't want them in your neighborhood, get them out. The answer is not to keep throwing them in jail and giving them little tickets and just making your city judge deal with the problem. Problem is getting them someplace where they can camp. I mean, have you guys ever took a walk down along that river?
Yes, I have.
Every other square. And you know what? Yeah, them guys aren't taking, they're not really doing very good. I mean, they're literally trashing it, throwing their beer cans all over the damn place. You know what I mean? But it's not because, so you guys need to help them find a place to get out of these parks.
So, Mr. Daniel, we do have a homeless shelter, a couple here in town.
Daniel? No, Daniels.
Daniels, excuse me. So we do have a homeless shelter, and, but we do not encourage tent camping. That is not a solution to a person's homelessness. So if you'd like to talk further about this subject, I'd be willing to meet you here at City Hall and address your concerns.
All right, then. Thank you for listening.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I don't recognize any of your faces except for, well, I think it's, yeah, I'm not going to worry.
Okay. Thank, thank you. Is there anyone else from business?
That's Bill.
Is there anyone else from business from the public?
I just haven't been shook.
Okay, not seeing anyone. All right. Counsel, on page four, we have a second reading of the ordinance. So Jim?
This is an ordinance of the City of Albany declaring a ban on recreational marijuana producers, recreational marijuana processors, recreational marijuana wholesalers, and/or recreational marijuana retailers referring ordinance and declaring an emergency.
Okay. Counsel, what would you like to do with this item?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made in the second discussion. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
I abstain.
Okay, could we get a roll call, Teresa?
Olson.
No.
Collins.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Callen.
Yes.
Kupinski.
Abstain.
Kilburn.
Yes.
Okay. We have a 4-2. All right. And with that, the motion's carried. Thank you, counsel. Next, it's a 4-1-1 vote. Oh, no, 4, we have a 4-1. 4-1.
4-1?
Bill. Okay. All right. Correct, Teresa, we had 4-1. Okay. Okay. Next is a first reading of ordinance. And as you can see, there was one member that abstained, so we sort of need to clear up things in our code. Did you want to?
Would you like to read the ordinance a first time?
Or, yeah, go ahead and read it.
An ordinance amending AMC 2.04.060 concerning voting abstentions at city council meetings and declaring an emergency.
Was there questions on the ordinance? This is the first time you're seeing this ordinance, counsel. Did you have questions unless you want to have it moved to have it read a second time?
Madam Mayor, realistically, I think we need to chew on this some.
Okay.
Have it, have it so it is in our heads and in our, in our being before we, I mean, it's an important thing. And, you know, don't jump in with both feet or not jump in at all. I'd just like to have a little time.
Okay, that's fine. Counsel, were okay with that? Betsy?
Yeah, I was going to say, I agree with that because when it was brought up last Wednesday, it was, it was very sudden. And to change anything like this, I think, like Rich says, we need to think about it, and we need to make sure that it's just not done on a whim.
Was there any, did, the language that was being changed in it, in the ordinance, did you have any questions on it that you want to have staff bring back, or not?
No. I think I understand it.
Yeah. Okay.
You know, Mayor, I guess, I don't know that this is the way we need to fix the problem. It is a way of fixing the problem, but if it is the way, and that's kind of why I want to kind of let it ruminate.
Okay. All right. So then what this will do is come up for a second reading at our next meeting on that.
That's fine with me.
Yeah. Okay. All right. All right. So next item is, this is another ordinance that's on page 13. So Jim, would you like to do the first reading?
Yes, ma'am.
It's a short one.
An ordinance repealing Chapter 10.16 of the Albany Municipal Code in its entirety.
Move the ordinance be read a second time, title only.
Second.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, second reading.
All right. An ordinance repealing Chapter 10.16 of the Albany Municipal Code in its entirety.
Counsel?
Move adoption of the ordinance, second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yeah, just for the benefit of the public, this is, this is repealing a portion of the code that dates back to when the sewers were putting in North Albany, and the city front-ended some money, about $1.2 million. And since that time, we collected that amount of money plus some, and we charged that to developing parcels, as well as the sewer systems development charges. And the intent was not to make the city rich off of making those upfront investments. And we've regrouped our original principal with some interest, and, you know, it's a bookkeeping issue now, how long do we keep carrying it forward? And I just have to make a call, and I think it's close enough that we've done what we intended to do.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right. Let's see, next is a resolution that's on page 16. And did staff have anything they wanted to mention on this?
Just a brief staff report, if that's, if that's okay.
Uh-huh. Yes.
Counsel, recall that over the last four years, we've been providing detailed revenue and expenditure presentations for the water utility. Through that process, we've implemented a series of water rate increases, building towards an annual capital investment of about $1.5 million in today's dollars. And we were hoping to achieve that target by 2017. We recall from those presentations, when we receive revenues, the first thing we do with it is we pay, pay our debts.
Second thing that we do with money received is ongoing operations and maintenance activities. And whatever money's left after paying for those first two items, we're able to allocate towards capital projects. Last year, we implemented a 2% rate increase, and we thought that we could need as much as a 4% increase this year in order to hit that target in 2017. Fortunately, our revenues have been high enough, and Chris and her crew out in operations have done a great job of controlling ongoing operation and maintenance costs. And so, in looking at the numbers this year, Chris and I thought that it was best to propose that we forego a rate increase this calendar year. We believe we can do this without sacrificing anything on the capital investment side. And beyond that, we also try to consider what's going on in our other utilities. So we are anticipating to recommend a sewer rate increase later this year, building towards our capital target that we've been speaking with you about over the last couple of years. And then we also have some difficult stormwater funding discussions coming up in the, in the next couple of months. So with all things considered, staff is recommending that we retain our existing water rates for 2016. And there's a resolution on page 16 of your packet for counsel consideration.
Okay.
Move to adopt the resolution.
Second. All right. Any discussion? So, it's kind of good news for change, so, yes, thank you. Yeah. Okay, all right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Thank you, Jeff. All right. And next would be on page 19. This is another resolution, and this is the capital reimbursement policy. Would you want to talk about this policy?
I would, please. And if, if the, at the end, you're willing, Mr. Watson's here tonight from Candy Engineering, I believe he's here for this topic, so if you're willing, and he has something to add, I'd ask you to consider that. So this item's talking about capital recovery agreements. And what these are, they're the primary tool that we use to facilitate one developer reimbursing another. primary tool that we use to facilitate one developer reimbursing another for past investments that are benefiting their property. Our connection fees, which are not to be confused with system development charges, are the funds that we use to complete that reimbursement. And there's dozens of different development scenarios where this comes into play. I'm going to show you just one example on this board here because it's going to make a lot more sense if I can use a picture. This will be quick. So, I'll be able to see that. Is, um, undeveloped properties, these black lines here, the property lines that I've drawn on here. Utility service. So, for this example, we're going to assume that property A comes in with a subdivision application. And part of their standard practice. So, what happens is property A gets stuck front of Bill to support their development. They're benefiting from the construction of these improvements. And when they decide to develop, to construct those facilities all the way through. So, that's where the connection fees and the cap- doesn't matter which one comes in, first second or third, if they then want to develop or connect- and then we rely on the capital recovery agreement with developer A to take those- when really they're benefiting fifty percent and the property on the other side is benefiting fifty percent for having that water in sewer lines there. Counsel has an adopted policy regarding these capital recovery agreements. And the changes that staff are proposing are really pretty simple and they start on page twenty of your, of your counsel packet. First thing is, there's, I'm sorry, take that.
No, I got it.
Okay. There are, first, there's just some general housekeeping things, changing the term ILA to connection fee, which Delaporte had us do a number of years ago, correcting terminology. So, we're correcting that in the policy. And then we're also making it clear that street and storm drain improvements are eligible for reimbursement. This is something we've done since 2003, but the policy just never got updated. So, it's not a change in practice at this point in time. It's just, just housekeeping. And then the last thing that we're proposing to do is to change the term of the agreement from ten to twenty years. So, right now, the policy that counsel adopted allows a ten-year timeframe for the properties, those B, C, and D properties on the other side of the street to develop, pay their connection fees, and then for us to reimburse the developer. The proposal is to extend that to twenty years.
Question.
Now, when-
Why have a limit? If, if at ten years, other people haven't done it, the guy loses out. Now, if at twenty years, the person hasn't done it, the guy loses out, why should he ever lose out for the thousands of dollars that he put in the ground that benefit the other people? Eventually, we are going to get the connection fees to give to him. Why not give them to him?
Sir, question, why not just put a limit on how much money you put in?
Sir, this isn't, this isn't a time for debate.
Let's hear the whole discussion before the question.
Yeah.
I think that'll be answered.
If I have just a couple more bullets and then, if I could, if I could respond to that. So, what's, what's in the proposal is to go from ten to twenty years. Extending the, the term to twenty years is something that was requested by the Planning Commission. It's something that developers are interested in. Candy's been working with the Mennonite Home recently. They'd like to pursue a twenty-year agreement for, for their expansion. And then city staff also supports extending the term. As far as, what's the right length of time? Is it forever or is it fifty years? Is it, is it eighty years? Certainly a council decision. Previous council had, had thought it was ten years. To surmise why they would have a limit on it or why, why the council chose to have a limit, I think it's important to, whether the right number's ten, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, council policy, I think having an, an end, end date is important because the, otherwise the fees can't, or the revenues just sit in that line forever. So, if something happens where, for whatever reason, we can't facilitate a reimbursement over time to that developer, those fees just sit there and can never be used for something else. And it seems like there needs to be an endpoint for that. Certain counsel, counsel can decide to do whatever you choose with that. What happens with, with fees that aren't reimbursed to a developer? So, current policy is if, if they don't get reimbursed to the original developer, connection fees, really the only way that they can be used is on infill projects. So, so an example of a recent project would be in North Albany, south of Green Acres, is it Picardy? Picardy, we did a water line infill. So, there's residents on Picardy that were interested in connecting to the water utility, but they, but they, they really just couldn't afford or justify the expense of putting the sewer in, or, excuse me, the water into Picardy. So, we had a connection fee reserved and we used those connection fees to construct that line. And then properties then connected, paid a connection fee back into the pot, and then we can do that type of thing elsewhere in town.
I understand. But going back to the original point, if, if KND does a project and they have to put in all the utilities, the underground utilities in a street as it's going in, because they're the one using that spot up there someplace, I mean, it doesn't change the fact that they had to put it in. I mean, if, when you get the connection fee from, from somebody on, on the other side, why can't it just go to KND? I mean, I, there, there must be, there must be something I'm just not understanding, I guess. Why couldn't that happen?
But, as Jeff said, it could, Rich. I, I think one of the issues is the longer the time passes, the harder it is, you know, KND might not exist twenty years from now, thirty years from now. The harder it is sort of to keep track of who, who's the recipient of the money. Plus, as Jeff pointed out, the longer the money goes unused. And the original investor, of course, is calculating when they make the investment, getting, you know, obviously it was worth it to them to be able to install that infrastructure and get, in this case, now we're proposing twenty years usage out of it. And still they're, apparently they're making money or finding the development attractive enough to do.
But it's still their money.
Well, it was their money to install the infrastructure that for that period of time, they're the only ones benefiting from it.
Well, and I'm not saying they shouldn't have to do it to begin with.
Right. And, and again, as Jeff said, this is a policy choice as to how long you think that's worthwhile. And also bear in mind the difficulty of trying to track down who you give the money to thirty, forty, fifty years out.
And that's something I want to echo a little bit. In the law, we have statutes of limitation all the time. And even though somebody might have been wrong, they might have been the victim of a theft, they might have been injured, there are limits that if the matter is not resolved in a certain amount of time, it's done. And part of the reason for that is even with the advent of computers, human systems are not perfect at tracking everything forever. After twenty years, pretty much most of the people that were here today will be gone. Most of the people with whom the contract was made will no longer be the owners of the property who would then seek to receive the benefit. And the utility will already have had a significant portion of its useful life used up. So, you certainly have the, the right to do it. I will tell you that I don't know when and I don't know what the circumstances will be, but there will be claims made against the city in the future that we will not have perfect records of. And it, and my successors and others will thank you for the opportunity to make money litigating about it.
So, there is a winner.
There is a winner.
It's always the lawyer. Why is it always the lawyer?
We write the laws.
Did you have more that you wanted to go through?
I'm, I'm in favor of, of doing this. I just, I don't see why twenty years, why not, why not fifty? I mean, if, if something happened fifty years ago that my grandfather did, I would not mind having the money. If it's the property that I own at the end of whatever and across the street, you know, it is-
The problem we get into is finding you and your cousins fifty years later when we're trying to write somebody a check.
Give it to the, give it to the property owner of, that, that has the, the spot. Because-
Could I ask how big your slush fund is, your, your public utility slush fund?
Don't have a slush fund. Does it have it still in the back?
Sure you do. Your connection fee fund that you paid Picardy way out of.
I don't have that property. It's, I have, I have multiple. It's in the sixty to a hundred thousand dollar range.
Okay.
My memory serves me from last May.
Well, I'm wondering why we don't just charge all developments for half the street. And the other side, when they get around to it, they'll pay their share in.
The question then becomes, who pays for the other half initially? And this goes back to Counsel Reed's position.
Well, it comes out of the slush fund.
There would be no slush. There'd be no slush fund. It would be queued up.
I wish you wouldn't have a slush fund.
There'd be, it would be back to half-street improvements.
So, is it twenty, always twenty years before the other side of the street develops?
Usually not.
How, how, how long is it usually? Five years?
It could be anywhere from six months or six days to sixty years.
Yeah. Well, I'll bet there's a few that are sixty years. I'll bet most of them are six months or a couple of years.
Yeah, I dealt, I dealt with this very same question when I was director and I've dealt with it with other cities. And this is a discussion Delaporte and I had. And what we're talking about is simplicity and equity. You can't have something that's simple and equitable at the same time. If you want it simple, that means you have to make some rough approximations. If you want it exact, it's going to be complicated. This is a reasonable approach. I'll guarantee you that developer A, when he does something with that parcel, he's calculated in a return what his original investment was. He, he's going to get most of that back on the first sale. And, you know, I'm not in a position of judging them to do that. I think that they have a right to get some of their money back. But it's a matter of reasonableness. And I think the proposal that staff has come up with is reasonable. Other municipalities I work for, we had either fifteen or twenty-year returns and that worked well. The development community knows that. Developers know that going into their, their proposal.
So, sir, you had a, a concern. Did you want to address the counsel? You need to come up to the podium. Yeah. And then you'll need to state your name and furniture address.
Skylar McCollum at 2175 Pine Meadow Drive. I was just wondering, is the fees going to stop after like a new development is built down the street? Or like if fifty houses were built down the street that use that same power line, are they going to pay towards that? Or is it, is there a limit of how many properties pay towards that fee? What about a new building?
Yeah, are you thinking power line or we're talking water, water and sewer line? Yeah, we don't do the power. Yeah. Yeah, Jeff?
These are based on costs for the improvements that front your parcel. So, it's based on the length of your frontage and the utility that's in front of it. So, the property that connects downstream or upstream, depending on how you're looking, would either have to construct the improvements and pay for it, or they will have to pay for the ones that are on their frontage. So, if it's not fronting them, they don't pay connection fees on lines that are not, that are not adjacent to their parcel.
Jeff, I think his, I think his question, though, is about, he's using yours, we do have a system where if, if there's a, if this is a feeder street, instead of having an eight-inch main, if the system down the road needs a twenty-four-inch main, you don't have to front the twenty-four-inch main, you only have to front what an eight-inch main would be.
Right.
So, you're only paying for your own. You're not paying for the guy down the road.
Would it be cheaper then for everyone if you just built a big enough system that newer developers would want to get in on, in those areas because of your developments? Like if you put a big enough water system or whatever you're doing to feed the whole neighborhood if there is continued growth? So-
We currently use a connection fee, which is as indicated. If property owners wanted to petition to have a larger, more comprehensive improvement put in and pay their proportionate cost, the city is always delighted to do that. We have not found that developers who plan to develop at some point in the future, but don't know exactly when, are interested in paying an assessment before they actually have their development. So, they are very reluctant to do that. And it's because developers don't want to be assessed if they're not immediately developing, that we have been forced to go to this alternative method. And so we come up with a fee based on a foot, based on a particular utility. And if anybody wants to put in their frontage instead, then they don't have to pay the fee. It's only if they choose or do not participate in that original improvement.
I think there's one additional clarification for the young man. In the example, we can either be putting in an eight-inch water or sewer line. And that's, eight inches deemed to be what's normal for residential development. If for some reason, we're going to anticipate a lot of growth on that line, we may put in a twenty-inch. But at the time that that eight-inch goes in, we require the twenty inches to go in and we pay the difference upfront ourselves out of our systems development charge money.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Sorry about interrupting.
No.
Capital recovery agreements.
Nope, nope. Did, Teresa, did you need his last name spelled or did you pick it up?
Sure, please.
Yeah, could you?
M C C O L L A U N.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Four people's eyes glaze over. Can I just move for adoption?
Yes, you sure can. Oh, want to say something, Dan? Yes, yes. Come forward.
Okay, I guess I, I won't object.
So, that wasn't a motion?
Dan Watson, W A T S O N. I live at seven-ten East Thornton Lake Drive Northwest Albany. Mouthful that street name is. I've talked with staff over the years about increasing this. You know, when I was younger, I thought ten years was, was a long time. And I've seen so many projects that put in facilities and never got their, the other half back. So, I think twenty years makes sense. And to be concerned, I, I think finding people is really the biggest challenge you have. You're, you guys are pretty good about keeping track of, you know, what's attached to what property, but finding people. So, so I would say if you're concerned about finding people, as you should be, maybe you make it renewable. So, if the person wants it to go longer than the twenty years, they come, you send them a letter, hey, the times are going to run out. Give us new update stuff and request a ten-year extension. And that way, you've got the dialogue. When you're looking for them, you can find them and they don't lose the opportunity to get reimbursed for the investments they made in our community.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, Jeff?
One consideration with that, I think, is, is as Mr. Bill proposed- One consideration with that, I think, is, is as Mr. Developer pointed out there, with the, the life of the utility. So let's say we extend for, and we get to a hundred years out. Now, in the position where the city's probably going to have to go in and, and pay for the cost to replace the water line, and we're going to take the connection fee money and hand it over to the, to the original developer. Just another consideration, that's all.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
Okay.
So can I now move for adoption?
Yep. All right. That's the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion?
Well, just wondering what Dan just said about letting him, letting him do an extension, but only like one, that type of a thing. I don't, I don't know.
I've created enough trouble.
Well?
I would say, we've got an improvement, let's take and see where it goes, see if we have any problems. If we've got people who are out there beyond twenty years, they can always, we can come back and reconsider.
Okay. That sounds fair.
Anything else?
No. But it won't be me.
All right. You can blame me for it.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right. Motion carried. Okay. Thank you, Jeff. Next is a resolution on page twenty-five, and this is the Maple Street lift station. So did you want to talk about this project?
Not for me. Stacy's going to cover this one.
Okay.
We like Stacy better than you, anyway.
Most people do.
She doesn't growl nearly as much as you do.
You've not seen her on a construction site.
I was going to say.
I know growling, I can do it.
Good evening, mayor, councilors. In this memo, staff is recommending that the city council, acting as the local contracting review board, adopt the attached resolution to the memo. The resolution is to establish a special procurement that would allow Public Works to purchase two flight pumps to be installed at the Maple Sewer Lift Station. Currently, the Maple Sewer Lift Station has four submersible pumps. There's two larger pumps that have a capacity of two-point-two million gallons per day, and then there's two smaller pumps that have a capacity of one-point-five M G D. This project would replace the two smaller pumps to match the capacity of the larger pumps. What this upsizing would do is it would increase the reliability at the station, it would help to reduce sewer overflows, and then it would also meet the long-term firm capacity requirements of the station. Staff is requesting establish, establishment of this special procurement. It's not practical or cost-effective to install a pump from a different manufacturer. A pump from another manufacturer, it could be modified to work in this lift station, but what it would involve would be making changes to the existing rail system that lifts and lowers the, the pumps into the wet well. The receiving piping located at the bottom of the lift station's wet well would also have to be modified. The wet well's thirty-five feet deep, so it would be pretty complicated work, and the lift station would have to likely be offline when the work was happening. The other thing that would have to take place if a pump from a different manufacturer was installed would, the controls would have to be changed. Currently, flight modules are connected to the controls at the lift stations, lift station. They would need to be modified if a different pump was installed. Adoption of the attached resolution, again, would authorize us to negotiate a contract and award to Xylem to purchase the two flight pumps. Xylem is the owner, they're actually the, the global supplier of flight pumps. Staff works with Xylem out of Portland, Oregon, and they have provided staff with a quote of approximately fifty thousand dollars for these two pumps. Once the pumps are supplied, staff would be able to install them, given the, the lift station was designed to accommodate flight pumps. Are there any questions?
Just a couple. On the budget impact that you noted on the staff report, what's the source of the revenue to pay for these?
Capital funds.
Capital funds, okay. And are either of the two pumps, you agree?
It's a, it's a project that was proposed in the budget, so there's.
Okay, it is a, it is a line item in the budget, okay. Are either of the pumps now failing? Is there a need to do it now?
It'll help reduce sewer overflows, and then, right now, if one of the larger pumps is offline, then we don't meet the firm capacity of the station. So we need it for, for reliability at the station. And there would be probably a, a chance to reuse the two smaller pumps.
Are you going to, so what will you do with the two pumps? Are those going to be resalable to someplace else?
They'd either be resalable, or we can even use them possibly somewhere else.
Okay.
Question, you said the pumps are, are they twenty-five thousand dollars apiece?
Yeah, the, the quote was, I think it was forty-eight thousand and change from, from flight.
And can you give us some perspective of, of, if it wasn't the Flight brand, what, what a competitors?
No. I, I would just, if I, I mean, it would be, probably be comparable, but I don't have those numbers filled.
I mean, it makes sense to me. I absolutely agree. And whether you needed it now or not, is, now is the time to buy it, so you have them. You know, we've run into that in our business, you, five years down the road, they don't make that product anymore, or they've tweaked it a little bit, and it's not a replacement. So, but I was just kind of curious.
Okay. All right, council.
Move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And motion carried. All right. Thank you, Stacy. Okay. Next is a very short consent calendar, so I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So move.
For approval? Okay.
Second.
Okay. Stacy's the first and then Foy is the second. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Motion carried. Next, this is on page thirty-two, and this would be for approving the Community Development Commission. These are the members that have been running on the expired terms, and if you're a member council, this is where we had to tweak the ordinance on this one. So entertain a motion on that, unless you've got some questions.
Move to approve.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Motion carried. Now, Ron Irish, you have got the dual left turn lanes at Spring Hill and Highway Twenty, and I bet you, council, all of you have been probably hearing from people is, why did they remove them? I've heard from many people saying, why did they remove tho, that extra lane? So.
Just because.
Just because.
Says we don't like you any more.
Yes.
So the, the intersection at Spring Hill and Highway Twenty is kind of an odd one. It's an intersection of a county road and a state highway, which makes you wonder why we have jurisdiction over the signal. But we have jurisdiction over a signal at the intersection of a county road and a state highway. When we built the North Albany Road Project, the detour route for North Albany Road involved Spring Hill, and that's what triggered a request from the city in Benton County to ODOT, so that the three agencies got together and agreed during the detour to allow these dual southbound left turns from Spring Hill onto the highway. And, and the reason was to accommodate the volume of traffic during the detour. ODOT was initially pretty reluctant to let us do that, and the reason wasn't because they didn't like the capacity it would provide, the reason was they were concerned about safety. And it is the superelevation of the highway. It's about a ten percent slope, so the north side of the highway is about eight feet higher than the south side of the highway next to the park. And the intersection has a history of trucks flipping over on their side and rolling into the park. There was a log truck that did that about four months before a construction project. And so ODOT's fear was that that would continue to happen during the detour, and they really didn't like the picture of a truck flipping over when there was a car next to it. And so what we did during the detour was we posted a alternate truck route, a required truck route, that forced those southbound trucks on Spring Hill that were headed towards the highway to, instead of continue past Hickory Street, take a detour on Hickory over to North Albany Road and get back to the highway from that direction. And during the, our construction project, that detour worked pretty well. The compliance rate was very good, and one of the reasons the compliance rate was good is that our police force did a very good job of enforcement during the detour. They were out on, almost a continuous basis. So when we came close to the end of the construction project, there was interest on both the city council, the county commissioners, and more residents than I can count to approach ODOT to see if ODOT would be willing to consider maintaining those dual lefts, what it would take, what we would have to do. So Benton County staff and myself set up a meeting, we met with ODOT to ask them that very question, and, and the answer was just, was pretty bleak. They, they didn't come right out and say no. What they did say was that, in order to consider it, they wanted us to, to make a proposal to them fairly quickly. They wanted us to do it before the North Albany Road Project was concluded. They didn't want the detour to remain in place, which they thought of as a safety issue for some indeterminate period of time. They wanted a, a decision one way or another pretty quickly. What, what their decision would boil down to was basically weighing the, the capacity benefits of the dual lefts with the safety concerns and the superelevation. And so to weigh those two things, they said they would need to see data from us that would come with the request. And the data involved things like a performance analysis of the two conditions, a turn movement analysis that showed the turn, the, the turning path movements of two side-by-side trucks going through the intersection. They wanted to see a, a plan and a commitment from the city and the county about how we would post the truck detour on Hickory and how we would enforce it. They had, as, as city staff had observed, once North Albany Road opened back up and the enforcement effort dropped, the compliance rate of trucks with the detours also dropped. And so while the detour was still posted at the end of the North Albany Road Project, we weren't enforcing it very much, and the result was the trucks went back to using Spring Hill. And so ODOT was, one of the things they wanted to see was how would we prevent that? And so it looked like the analysis it would take to support the application would have cost us on the order of twenty thousand dollars, money that the county indicated they didn't have to spend, and that if the city was interested in pursuing this idea, it would, it would come from the city. And then ODOT staff at the end of the discussion pointed out that the old signal pole and mast arm for the intersection was, as they put it, nineteen-seventies vintage, and the conversion to a dual left permanently would require adding extra signal head to the mast arm, which they didn't think could support, and that would require replacing the pole and the mast arm. And we didn't come up with an accurate number from that. I, we have someone nearby who could probably quote us a number. My guess was seventy-five or eighty thousand to replace the pole and the mast arm. So we had a very short timeline to make a decision. I, I think Jeff Blaine, in his staff report in earlier council meeting, gave you very similar information to this, and we made a decision to not at that point in time to pursue these left turns, based on the unlikely success we'd have with the request to ODOT, and if we were successful, the costs we'd be facing. So the question now is, what would it take to ever get to dual left turns, and when could we expect to have that happen? Hard to tell. I mean, there is a safety project ODOT's doing for the Highway Twenty corridor that they're just now starting up. The first meeting is Wednesday. I believe ODOT staff briefed the NPO, Councilor Olson was there earlier this week, late last week, rather. And that study will look at Highway Twenty from Corvallis to the Spring Hill intersection. And so we'll be, through that study, beginning some of the analysis that ODOT would have asked the city to do with that initial request that they were, we were discussing with them. The safety project ODOT's doing may or may not be enough to resolve their concern about the superelevation on the road. My, my guess would is it's not. I, I think if the superelevation turns out to be as big a problem as ODOT staff envisions it to be, then we're not going to get dual lefts at that road until we figure out a way to fix the superelevation. There is a problem, or a, a project in our TSP. It's identified as a long-term project for that section of Highway Twenty. It would add a extra lane to the highway on the north side of the roads, would be a, a westbound travel lane. It would extend it from the base of the bridge all the way to North Albany Road. And it would provide essentially a right turn lane from the highway onto Spring Hill and a right turn lane onto North Albany Road. That project, we have always envisioned as being the one that would fix the superelevation problem at the intersection. But it's identified in our TSP as a long-term project. So in terms of timeframes, ten, fifteen, twenty years out, something like that. So that's, that's what I know about the issue now. I can, I can take questions about it if you've got them.
And what's, what's the timeframe for ODOT's analysis from Spring Hill to Corvallis on Highway Twenty, the, the safety analysis?
I, I, I don't know how long they think it's going to take. Our, our first meeting is, is Wednesday morning, and so I'll, I'll find out Wednesday about how long they think that study's going to take. My, my guess is months, several months.
Once they, once they conduct that study and have recommendations, then that provides the foundation to move the capital improvements into the STIP program for ODOT. Is that correct?
It, I, I think they are envisioning that what's going to come out of that safety analysis is a series of STIP projects on the highway system. They're focusing, at the moment, their initial focus is on problems they've had, crashes, significant crashes at Granger, at Independence, closer to Corvallis, but they're also looking at the curves in North Albany, they're looking at North Albany and Spring Hill. So there could potentially be, be projects that come out of that that would end up in the STIP.
Yeah.
Ron, when this came up a few months ago, I voiced my frustration that, you know, with, with some of the government entities, and that this worked during the detour, and now it's deemed that it, that it won't work. I have a problem understanding ODOT's thinking that, because it sounds like this is not a good idea, it's, it's not safe, it won't work, we'll go ahead and allow it on a temporary basis, but then it's going to go back to the way it was. So that in and of itself doesn't really make sense. Is the issue primarily that they don't want trucks turning left from the left-hand lane with a car in the right lane?
Uh, yes.
So is it possible, through striping, making the right lane wider than the left lane, you know, other various ideas, to have the trucks in the right lane only? Or is that really not feasible or practical?
I, I don't know that if you were trying to, you know, the ODOT requirement for the study they wanted us to do was to model two side-by-side trucks, an oversized WB sixty-seven on the inside and a log truck on the outside, you know, a situation you would rarely, if ever, see. But if you modeled those two vehicles going through the intersection, you would have very little flexibility in the, in the path they took if both of those vehicles are going to make the curve.
Right.
And so that, that's the situation they wanted us to model, and I don't know that we could, you know, juggle the, the path enough to, to make a difference in the superelevation. You're, you're going across essentially the worst part of the intersection, the part with the steepest slope.
Well, that does make sense. Okay. Thank you.
Well, but back, back to Ron's point, rarely if ever happened, and when Counselor Reed was here, being the experienced truck driver that he was, he, he would say, if you got those two trucks pulled up to that stoplight side-by-side, they're going to recognize there's two trucks pulled up side-by-side at that stoplight, and one's going to give way to the other.
That's right.
You know, so I think, while ODOT, in theory, may be looking at absolute worst-case scenario, in practicality, they're way off base. So I would hope, in the scope of the discussion on the safety analysis, that you can leverage some discussion to say, maybe we need to look at the practicality piece of this. I think that the safety program also provides the opportunity to ultimately fix that superelevation and have the funds come out of ODOT's budget.
Good luck.
Well, that's how you, that's what the, that's what the STIP is for.
Right.
And that's where the NPO starts to play a role in the regional transportation planning.
They, they did mention that as, you know, it was a, it was a balance between capacity and safety. And so over time, the more congested that intersection becomes, the more, the more they're going to give a, they'll give less concern, uh, less concern, but they're, that'll start weighing as much as the safety issues they're worried about, because it's. Because a safety issue, as you pointed out, is this odd situation of these two side-by-side trucks. And, and it won't occur very often. And so when there's, the capacity gets bad and they need the capacity at the intersection, it'll be easier to make that case with them.
Well, there's two things affecting capacity. One's the traffic load on Spring Hill, as it increases, as it will. And the other is the increased traffic coming from Corvallis on Highway 20. Because when you get traffic stacked up all the way past the S-curves on Highway 20, and everybody's pushing to get through that last light, you get maybe four or five cars coming off of Spring Hill, whether you have 10 cars on Spring Hill or 50 cars on Spring Hill. Because the bridge stacks up. And the bridge backs up. And the bridge, and it backs up beyond North Albany Road, past the S-curves. So it's almost like, you know, one of those little queuing signals on the on-ramps in Portland. And you're going to have to start queuing those in there. So we got really two questions related to capacity. And both Ralph and I have argued for years that if we put an absolute moratorium on construction in North Albany, North Albany Road and Spring Hill are going to go to failure classification because of the increased traffic under peak hour coming out of Corvallis. And ODOT needs to face up to that program and that scenario and figure out what the heck we're doing all the way from the bridges into Corvallis.
And, and back to my comments, I think when you talk to these people or you're in, on these discussions or meetings, certainly bring up the point that it worked. That, that to me has to be one of the biggest arguments. I mean, that's the elephant in the room. I mean, you've got all these engineers lined up and they've got their wall covered with degrees. I don't care. It worked. I'll, I'll give you an example. If, if you take the time to look at how they're building traffic signals these days, the, the poles have eight anchor bolts. The mast arms are huge. Sometimes there's eight bolts holding on the mast arms. There's one engineer in, in ODOT, and I've called him out on it. But he's just gone off the, the deep end on, on design on these things. And I talked to him and I said, give me an incidence of failure on any of these poles. All you got to do is look at the ones that, over here on Third and Lion, and they're not a very big anchor bolt, and they're not a very big pole, and so forth and so on. This guy proceeded to just chew me up one side and down the other. Don't you dare bring up incidence of failure on that. That has nothing to do with that. But if it works, it, it works. I've never heard of a traffic signal pole falling down. You know, yet we continue to overbuild and it, it costs a lot of money anyway. So I, sorry I got off on that tangent, but my point being, what we did worked. And to me, there's value in that.
There was interest at the staff level, even before the project went in, about would we be able to keep these dual lefts at the end? And when was the best time to ask ODOT to do that? And from a strategic point of view, the decision was made to wait towards the end of the project for precisely the reason you described, to be able to show that it worked. And the fact that there was such a high level of community support, everybody that drove through it recognized it was a capacity benefit. And that's why that we, we get so many calls, you know, can you keep it? It was because the benefit was so obvious.
Well, do you have any questions, Ron?
Be tough.
Yeah.
Be tough with them.
Well, thank you for checking into it for us, Ron. So, yeah, thank you. But, okay. And I think you're here for the next item. So quiet zones for at-grade rail crossings.
And the one after that, too. So.
Yeah.
Go quick. So council got a, got an email from a resident, Mr. William Tally, back in September, requesting that you think about implementation of quiet zones in the city. And it's a question that's come up periodically in town, but pretty informal discussions. I don't know if the council's ever made a formal decision or provided direction on what to do about quiet zones. And that's kind of what we're here tonight, is to see if you want to give us direction on what to do about quiet zones. So.
Let's be quiet about it.
For, for railroad street crossing, it's called an at-grade crossing. And there's a federal law that says that when a train approaches an at-grade crossing, there's a federal regulation, they have to hit the horn. And there's a, there's a, there's a minimum distance in advance of the crossing, they have to hit it. It's based on the speed of the train. And virtually every train will hit at least the minimum number of horns in the spacing. But, you know, over jealous engineers will often hit the horn more often because it's nice to be a train engineer and hit the horn, I think. So in a, in a quiet zone, what happens is that there are changes made to the at-grade crossing to, to make it safer, remove conflicts between motor vehicles and trains. As a result of those changes, the obligation for the train company to hit the horn goes away. As a matter of fact, the train company can't hit the horn at those things. But implementing a quiet zone is not a small thing. It's a pretty big thing. So it involves generally physical improvements to the, to the crossing itself. The most common improvements involve something called quad gates. So you think of the normal train crossing, you have one gate that goes down and covers only the approach lanes to the intersection. So the departure lanes from the crossing, there's not a gate over on that side. And that's usually not a problem unless somebody decides they want to drive around the gate. In which case they can get, they can get hit by the train. There have been cases of that happening in Albany, people driving around the gates. Motor vehicles, pedestrians, bicyclists. There was unfortunate incidents today, I think, involving that exact issue at, at Queen Avenue. So installation of a quad gate would put gates across basically the entire width of the road, both the approach and departure legs. ODOT will also sometimes meet in islands that happen in the middle of the two, two lanes of traffic in addition to the quad gates. And how you decide what improvements go at each crossing is a negotiation between the Federal Railroad Associate Administration, ODOT Rail, the railroad that has jurisdiction over the crossing, and the road authorities. So basically, all four of those entities form a group, a work group, that discusses a safety improvement specific to that particular crossing. And then that's what has to happen for a quiet zone. And a quiet zone can't just be one crossing. It has to be a corridor at least a half a mile in length. And so you have to treat enough crossings to get through at least a half a mile stretch. As you might expect, in Albany, we've got an awful lot of crossings because we have three active rail lines in town. And roughly 29 at-grade crossings, and we've got them going east-west and north-south. And so we've got, you know, we could treat half the crossings in town. And what that would mean is that the trains are still going to hit their horns at the other half of the crossing. And so there's a point where you start this thing, you don't see a lot of benefit because you're not dealing with a lot of crossings, until you deal with enough crossings to actually affect the noise that you're having in the community. We've never had, we've never gone through the negotiation with the railroads and ODOT Rail and the Federal Railroad Administration to come up with an estimate of any particular crossing in town. Now, ODOT Rail has in the past, in informal discussions, given us ballpark estimates of roughly a half a million dollars per crossing to implement a quiet zone. So if we have, for instance, 29 crossings in town, we're looking at close to $15 million if we were to implement quiet zones on all of them. Even that wouldn't eliminate all the horns in town because we couldn't deal with the crossings or actually the rail line in Water Avenue from Main Street to about Geary where the track runs right down the middle of the road. There's no way to make that a quiet zone. So that particular one, no matter what we ever did with it, the trains, if they're running down that stretch of railroad, are pretty much going to be hitting their horn the whole time because the whole thing is a conflict zone. And so that there are, have been numerous cities that have implemented quiet zones in Oregon and throughout the country. They, they tend to be, start off with, with either fewer rail lines or fewer crossings. So there's a limit to what they have to do to see a lot of benefit. You know, we, we have quite a few crossings, so we would probably need to do quite a few to see the similar amount of benefit. It's often the case in some of those other communities that if the community is willing to close one crossing, that they can obtain federal money, say federal rail safety money to improve an adjoining or a different crossing, they can implement quiet zone improvements that way, essentially closing one and return for an improvement another one. We, we took a very similar approach to the rail crossings along Water Avenue. But if we look at the other at-grade crossings in town, we don't have a lot of crossings left to trade away. And they're, 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 they're tending to cross arterial roads right now, and we don't have a lot to trade. And so the, the question of how would it get, how would they be funded comes up. You know, the railroad doesn't pay for those things. If we can't close crossings, there's no federal money available. And the cost, basically, an implement quiet zone, zones would fall to the city in that instance. And so if, if you were interested in pursuing quiet zones, your, your best bet is probably to do some kind of analysis that looked at which were your busiest corridors, how many crossings you had on the busiest corridors, and see what it would take to implement a quiet zone along some or all of that. And then see how close that corridor is to the other adjoining corridors that you may not be treating at the same time. And then make a decision about whether the train noise you would still see in the community from those other crossings makes this whole thing not worth it, or if implementing a quiet zone on a, a particular corridor made sense to you. But it's a, it's a fairly complicated, difficult thing, and I can't really give you a precise answer about what it would take because at each crossing, it's this individual negotiation with the feds, ODOT Rail, and in our case, you know, three different railroads, depending on which crossing you're dealing with. Yes, sir.
Given if you picked one, is that more or less half of the crossings, maybe? So instead of being 15, it's seven and a half million dollars?
Uh, I, I think, most of our cross, I think the UP line probably has most of the crossings, followed by the UP Main Line, followed by the UP line that Burlington Northern runs that comes over the trestle in North Albany, and that has crossings at second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth.
They're all basically in the same spot?
Right along one corridor. So you have to, yes, like if you treated only, for instance, the, that, the second UP line, the northern one that P&amp;W's on, and you did, for instance, the North Albany crossings, if you did scenic, North Albany Road, Spring Hill, you could eliminate, it's longer than a half mile, you could eliminate horn noise up there, but that same train, once it got to the trestle, would start hitting the horn again because it's going to be approaching the second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth.
Well, my point there is, is there someplace we're going to have eight or $10 million that we're going to be able to even deal with it? And if we don't have that, isn't the whole point moot? I mean, if, you know, if, if it's costing us something, someplace we can point to, to say, okay, yeah, we, it's going to, we're going to spend $10 million bucks and it's going to save us some money someplace. Realistically, there isn't anybody alive today here that was here before the railroads. We moved in next to them. We moved in next to the airport and next to the, you know, and now to say, well, gee, now I want it quiet. I mean, do I like, do I like getting wakened by a helicopter coming down from Aurora at 11 o'clock on Saturday evening? No, I don't. But I'm living next to the airport, so I shouldn't be griping. I mean, you know, this may sound a little hard-hearted, but realistically, are we going to spend eight or $10 million to find out? I don't see anybody nodding their head.
I think this is one of those things that, well, originally when this came up, I agree with staff, we'd never formally addressed the question. I think the, the quiet zone could be an unfunded project in our capital improvements program. It's identified out there. But I'm with Rich. Where, where would we get seven and a half or 10 million bucks? Are we going to go to a bond issue? Are we going to use some other transportation money? But that, the CIP is where you make that evaluation. And if you have unfunded projects, you're out beyond five years, you at least keep it in the program. And if money becomes available, you can pull it forward. But at this point, I wouldn't favor going out for, asking the voters for authorization for seven and a half or 10 million dollars to quiet the train whistles, when the same amount of money we could apply to some of our arterial and collector streets, or start to fix some of our residential streets. So it, it comes back to what's our priority for capital investments. But I don't want us to lose track of the fact that it's been raised and there is an opportunity. It may be a low priority, someday it may be a high priority. But if it's in the CIP, even as an unfunded project, we don't lose track of it.
Are you suggesting, then, to put it in the CIP?
I would. I'd put it in the CIP as an unfunded project.
Would it cost us anything?
To, to put it in the CIP?
Yeah. Other than a little bit of staff time, but that costs.
Well, we're going to be doing a revision of the CIP coming up in spring.
It lasts five minutes to do that.
Oh, well, okay.
I did just receive an email from Mr. Tally, so he appreciated you contacting him to let him know about that this agenda item was on tonight's agenda. And he wanted to thank us for his, for consideration of this issue, so.
We'll send a letter to the editor.
In today, yeah. He just sent another email. Okay. So I guess does the council want it added to the CIP? CIP's sort of our, the unfunded section of our CIP. It's sort of our wish list. Yeah. Okay. All right. Ron, I think you've got another one, another item. Is that yours?
It's almost over. So at a recent bike ped commission meeting, the commission made a motion that they forward a recommendation on to you regarding Lyon and Ellsworth Streets. And their recommendation is, was that, that they asked you to consider implementation of a project on those streets. It's in our TSP right now. It's the installation of something called a charrow on both Lyon and Ellsworth, from basically Ninth Avenue back to the bridges, and in the case of the Ellsworth Street Bridge, across the bridge itself. So there's, there's a picture in your packet of what a charrow is. Basically, it's, it's something in between nothing and a bike lane. So unlike a bike lane, it doesn't remove parking, it doesn't provide a designated space, a protected space for a bicyclist to travel. What it does do is provide bicyclists with some indication of where they're supposed to be traveling on the road. And it provides motorists with some expectation that they might expect bikes on the road if they see that marking there. We have several streets in town, we have these things in now. We have some on Liberty Street, out south of Queen Avenue by, by the high school. We have some just south of what used to be the Albertson Shopping Center, where Sportsman's is now. So we have a few in town. We started putting them in about six or seven years ago. We added charrow installation as a project to the TSP back in 2010 and didn't initially ask ODOT to do it. And the reason is, ODOT was a little bit reluctant at that point in time to consider them on the highway system. Our bike ped commission, one of them went over to, to the coast, went over the bridge at Newport in Aquina Bay, and noticed that there were charrows on that bridge now. Did some research and found out that ODOT had approved an installation there, and so came back and wanted, thought that now that's time to write to make a request to ODOT. So I contacted ODOT staff. They've indicated that they would consider a request to do that. But in the event that the request was approved, they would require an IGA between ODOT and the city for at least the maintenance of these things. Very similar to the IGA, we, IGAs we already have with ODOT for crosswalk maintenance across Lyon and Ellsworth at non-signalized intersections. There was an IGA you had to approve with ODOT a few months ago, next to St. Mary's Church, for that exact thing. So before we made a request to ODOT, because ultimately if successful, it would require an IGA with council, we decided we'd stop off here first and we'd say, do you want us to make the request to ODOT or not? If, if you decide to direct us to make that request and, and ODOT's answer is yes, the cost to put them in, our TSP estimated about $6,000 bucks. It would be funded with SDC money, most likely. It's, it's funded 100% on our TSP. So there's, there's probably money there to do it if, if the answer was yes and you direct us to go forward.
Okay. Yeah, Floyd.
Well, we're, we're in the process of talking to ODOT about Lyons and Ellsworth because of the downtown improvements within Cara. I would roll that into that discussion and ask at that point, honor the request from the, from the committee, roll that into that discussion. And if we get approval, then it becomes a function of that improvement. And we do them all at one time. Whatever improvements we ultimately end up with on Lyons and Ellsworth, this would be a piece of that.
That's, that's a very good suggestion. We will no doubt have to have an IGA with ODOT for some of the improvements that are envisioned around the fire station.
Okay. Rich? Did you have?
No.
Okay.
He, he took my phone.
There's no interest on the part of ODOT for ODOT to put them in?
We, that's probably where we would start, our request, to see if ODOT was willing to stripe them. In the past, informally, they, they basically In the past, informally, they've basically said, if we want them, we'll have to do them. What I understood happened in the Astoria or Yaquena Bay Bridge case is that the ODOT bike ped program funded the construction, or the painting of the stencils, and that the city agreed to maintain them through an IGA. So there might be some, well, I think we're probably stuck with maintenance, there might be some opportunity to have ODOT share or fund the installation.
I just see a scenario where we paint them, and then ODOT decides to do a grind and inlay, and in the process wipe them out, and then they come knocking on our door and say, hey, you need to repaint those. It's like, well, wait a minute, you just took them out. It just seems like a minor thing for, for ODOT to do, and again, I, ODOT's involved in bicycle safety, and certainly has funding for it.
We have a new district manager in ODOT that covers us. Now, our last manager got a promotion, went to another function within ODOT. We were at the MPO meeting late last week, and I expressed the concern, again, going back to Councilor Reed, why is it that Albany comes up on the short end of the maintenance money for the state highway running through downtown? And like at Corvallis, Lebanon, Sweet Home, they all have the substantial improvements. And I tried to bend the young lady's ear and said, we're over here, we've got state highways running through our town, we want to be treated fairly. You know, it goes all the way down to the frequency of street sweeping. So we may have an advocate with the new representative at our district level, I would hope so. But I think incorporating it into the discussion with the folks in Salem would be the appropriate thing to do.
All right. Is that what the council wants to do? Okay, all right. Is that enough direction, Ron?
I do. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Okay, and next, who wants to handle the Brandis property?
I can get started while Kate is coming up. I think as the council is aware, we have been, the council directed staff to market, try to sell the Brandis property out near Timber Ridge School for future development, to recover the costs that the city had basically funded for the infrastructure to be constructed in association with the school. We've had interest from a number of different parties on several different occasions. One of the barriers to the sale of the property, though, has been the absence of delineated wetlands. We all know that there's wetlands there, they're on the inventory, but of course, we also all know that you have to really.
Dig and find them.
Yeah, you have to narrow it down to where, where, or you have to narrow it down to what actually has to be mitigated, and only a delineation can allow you to do that. And so Kate has come up with a proposal. I would also add that we've just received an offer on the prop, on a piece of the property. So that's another factor that we didn't have when this staff report was written, that just came in today. But Kate, if you'd like to explain where we are.
Sure, sure, and I'd like to take credit, but it was Ryan and Public Works that compiled this information for you guys. The details of the costs are outlined on page 45 of your packet. And so total cost to delineate the four different tracks is 21,675. And as Wes said, we even, through one of our partners, had a conversation, they had a conversation with their appraiser, we were going to start the conversation about negotiation and trying to set a price, but the appraiser got back to them and said, look, I'm, I'm unable to calculate a price unless I know how much buildable land there is. So it seems a necessary step if we would like to sort of set the table and move forward and have the property, sort of the pump primed and ready to sell.
Well, Kate, what this buys us is time, or the sale of time. Because if we have the delineation done now, this next winter, purchaser comes along in July, they have to wait till the following year for them to do it. So it buys at least one year. I think it's prudent to have that information available for potential sale, because it goes to the net value of the property. I would ultimately roll the price of the delineation into the price of the property when we sell the tracks to recover it, because we've made the investment, just as though we made the investment in the infrastructure. So it goes into our total sunk cost, and we try at minimum to recover our sunk cost, and what we've done is saved a potential developer a year, year and a half with timeframe.
And there's also, the council never has been able, we've never really had the question or to even answer to look at, do we want to set more of a vision plan for this area? So there's a lot of potential here when we've got close to what, 100 acres, of really coming up with a good vision plan. Or are we going to just piecemeal things together and then really look at down the road, was this the right, you know, the right uses that ended up getting built in this area? So if this gives us time for this delineation, I think it would be really, really good for the council to see what kind of vision do we want to have? Do you want it all multifamily? Do you want to get a mix of housing values, you know, or just go with the flow of the same type of cookie cutter type development? Or can we look at something coming up with a good vision for this area?
So you're suggesting going back and revising the comp plan and the zoning of the property?
We have the, we have some of the zoning there and see what can be done. We can, it's, it's an opportunity, we own the property, to say, if we're going to sell them, this is what we'd like to see for this area.
I can tell you that the interest that we've seen expressed for the bulk of it, the developable, developable.
Developable.
Thank you, Rich. Is multifamily housing. That's, which of course is currently zoned for that purpose.
Yeah, and so there is a lack of multifamily east of the freeway, but there's a lack that we're seeing of more of a, you know, higher value home too. Because right now, what we have is all the same size of homes, the same lots. Do we want to see more variety out in that area? And if we try to be able to get a piece of it as some more higher valued home, where would the good location be? I think it would be worth getting, you know, getting some input, coming up with sort of a, a good plan for this area. This is a good opportunity. We could set the path of, you know, kind of showing here that we've come up with a good urban plan for this area, and this shows something how we want Albany to look, so.
One challenge to that is, if the council wants to plan what you want, what limits you want to put on a buyer, you need to tell staff before we make marketing efforts so that we don't miss-market your property.
Yeah, we've been having, based on direction, previous direction from the council, we've actually been in discussions with, well, now three separate potential purchasers, all of whom have an idea of what they would do with different pieces of the property. Bear in mind, too, that the amount of land that's available for development, you noticed I avoided the word that time, is pretty small. It's not 100 acres or anything close. I think it's.
I think we need to see that. We've never really had the question to this council of really, do you want to have a vision plan for the area or not? So, and it would be nice to know, what is marketable? Is the marketable pieces close to the school, close to our park, or not? It would, I think it would be really good for the council to really see what can we do for that.
Well, and the delineation will help you in that effort. But we do, we may have an immediate proposal for you fairly shortly, so that's.
On which track, Wes?
It's on seven acres, I believe it's the southwest, is that correct?
Track three?
I think it's track two on this map.
Track, track two?
The multifamily.
Sorry, I don't have, I don't have it in front of me, but.
Well, all of which begs the question, do we need to do this? Do we need to do the investigation? I think clearly yes.
Since Wes brought up a potential offer surfaced, is it contingent upon us doing this survey?
No, the, the offer that we have on the table is not, but it's only for a piece, a fairly small piece of the overall property.
And I would interject and say that one of the other potential purchasers, two of the other potential purchasers do need the wetlands delineation.
And I suspect even the offer that's being considered is really going to require this knowledge, because they have a lot of contingencies on getting, being through the approval process before their obligation is final, and they can't get through the approval process without the delineation. So as Councilor Collins points out, if it's going to have to be done anyway, if we spend it, and thereby can argue that we've relieved them of that burden, it's something that would go into price negotiations. But also, without better knowledge, it's difficult, and without an appraisal, it's difficult for us to know whether or not offers that are coming to us are good offers or not. We're not in the business of selling real estate.
I will say that one of the things that's happened by not selling it immediately is that prices have certainly rebounded, and, and the offers that we're seeing now are more consistent with the valuation of property as it was back pre-2007, 2008. So we're back up to that $100,000 an acre plus that we were seeing back in the good old days.
And it's the lost taxes.
Yeah.
Kate, did we go out for bids on the, the work, the delineation, or is that something we typically get more than one price on, or?
I, Ryan did this work, so I'm not clear. I'll maybe look and see if Stacy knows the answer. I think he called for three prices. I, I'm not, I don't know the answer to that, I'm sorry. Do you know, Stacy?
I'd just, I'd be curious.
I think because it's under a certain threshold, it was not required. I know it did not go out for bid, so I can tell you that. I do not.
Oh, no, and I can appreciate it didn't go out for bid, but if we're, as long as we're getting two or three prices, to know that it's a fair price for the delineation.
Most wetland consultants, it's a function of price and availability. Some people may be available, some may not, and they rehearse to make a phone call.
So I think the, the question to us tonight, though, is whether you would like to go ahead and proceed with appropriating the funds for the wetland delineation. And so staff will need direction on that, but also, and I mean, it probably doesn't have to be done tonight, is more, unless the council wants you to just think about it, do we want to come up with a vision plan for this area? Or do we just want to piecemeal it and have little chops here and there of, let any sort of development come through?
I, for one, don't want to delay the consultant getting started to hit the window of January through March to do the delineation. So, you know, we can, we can have that discussion, Mayor, about vision or not.
It's three yes on this side.
I think it's hard to come up with a vision until you know what you've got to work with too, Sharon. You know, when they delineate and you see, like Wes has said, it's a lot less developable, developable.
Developable.
So that, I think that might impact the discussion on, on what we want this to look like.
Well, and it gives us some time to, to think about it too, you know, for, you know, before it's delineated is, do we want to have kind of a plan for this area, so.
I would move that we direct staff to proceed to get the four tracks delineated, using the Economic Development Fund as recommended. And further, that, as we gave previous instructions, that upon sale of the property, that money comes back into the Economic Development Fund. This goes into the sales price, returns to that fund also.
All right, any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right, okay, next. So Kate, this one's yours also.
Yeah, yeah, I'll just stay seated right here. So this is bringing back an item that I believe was before, most of you all, we were missing one counselor that night, and this is regarding getting direction from you all on which policy body you would like to conduct a review of the transient lodging tax. The original staff report I included is on page 48, 49 of your packet. And being that we've talked it through once, I'll, I'll make this really brief. Ultimately, of course, you guys have the choice in defining who is going to review this policy and what that review will look like. Staff is recommending that you yourselves, the city council, be the reviewing body of the policy. And one thing that I wanted to point out, I think it was brought up at the last meeting, a hesitancy to kind of do the same old thing, hear the arguments that have been made during budget hearings. And while it is up to you how, what information we bring and how we organize that, I at least, as staff had envisioned, a robust and rigorous dialogue that you all would have regarding this policy. We have the potential to bring in experts such as marketing folks from Travel Oregon or a facilitator. We can structure it however you would like, but we've got a lot of flexibility. But ultimately, that choice is up to you all as to who you'd like to designate to have that conversation.
Okay, all right, and I believe the council discussion that we had last time was quite a bit, and I can't remember who was missing. Was it Floyd?
I was gone.
Oh, okay. And then, so Bill, the motion was then that failed was for the city council to be the reviewing body.
I don't remember that. I remember it was the outside group, because that's what I proposed.
Oh, the, the outside group.
It was an outside group of what I talked about, seven people, one from each of us, to include people such as Jeff Crisman, and Betsy Penson, and Bill Draper, and Mitch Langer, who was here earlier, and maybe Mr. Pearson from the Budget Committee. But, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking in terms of for the AVA and ADA portion, because that's the portion that we don't have very much expertise. As far as the portion that dealing with the airport and AMDEC, that kind of thing, you know, equipment replacement, I mean, we have, we have what we need, and we can listen to those folks that, that can, that can tell us that. But a group of people who do not receive TLT and who do not pay TLT, so they're, you know, each of us gets, would get one, so it would be kind of like the fire and safety, an ad hoc group set on a course, what's the, you know, is it working? How's it, what's happening with it? Is it working? Is that the best system that they can think of? Because many of those people have this kind of ability, something that we don't have so much of.
Would you anticipate people would submit an application to be on that committee like they do other committees within the city?
It's a fairly, for people, people who have marketing skills, I mean, you, you may well know someone who has that. I know several because of my position, and because of the fact that I've been around. You know, I, I would say that we propose who they are, and look at them and see. I mean, if I say Jeff Crisman, and you know Jeff, you know whether or not he's, he's a guy who knows about money and this and that and the other thing. I say Betsy Penson, and, you know, she's the, the manager of the mall, and she does this kind of stuff every single day. Mitch, you've probably met, he ran Airgas, a multi-billion dollar corporation. I mean, these are folks who have their stuff together.
Kate, do you remember what the motion was?
My recollection was that the motion was the other way around from what Councilor Collins described, that it was a motion to approve the council being the policy review body, and that it was a three to two vote. But I don't have the minutes here.
Now, does the council remember that?
There was a motion made that Pat, well, it was taken three to two to vote to have the council review. There was discussion along, for both ideas, and that was the motion that was made.
Well, it was not passed. I would make the motion that we make the outside group, as I have, that each counselor and the mayor appoint one member to this group of outside people.
And that's a motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, all right. Any discussion?
Yes. Let's see, Dick. Oh, Dick. We got a transient lodging tax report here, I guess. And we only made 3% in the last month, but, one, two, three, four. Over the six figures we have here, it looks like they average in over 10% in double figures. So I'm still wondering why we are githering with this and saying we're not doing well enough, and it's just not satisfactory, so I'm, I'm confused.
If I could clarify, from a staff perspective, we're not advocating one plan or another. It has been our practice, when you have a motion that is not passed, because you don't have enough votes for a full council, we are directed to bring it back to the next council meeting, when we have a full council. So that's why this motion is back in this form. Otherwise, if it had failed, it wouldn't be coming back, and. Otherwise, if it had failed, it wouldn't be coming back, and so that's.
So, I just can't see any reason to vote for it.
I just looked up the council summary that's online, and you were correct that it was the vote for the council to be the review body.
Exactly. So, I want to make it clear, we're not trying to take a side here, we're just trying to point out the process we follow.
Then, there's another question. Are we voting on the new motion or the old motion that didn't pass?
Jim, go ahead and explain, because actually, this motion's out of order then.
Well, if you have a pending motion from the last meeting, that simply failed because, even though it was in the majority, it didn't get the requisite votes, then your policy is to bring that pending motion back. So, that motion would still be pending, which would make Counselor Kellum's motion out of order until you decide whether or not there are four votes to go the other way. I mean, the outcome's going to be the same, I would assume. If, if you believe Counselor Kellum's perspective is the best way to go, you would vote no on the pending motion. And then, Counselor Kellum would substitute his motion.
Okay. So, there, still the motion then would be on the table of, to have the council be the reviewing body over the TLT funds.
That's a question.
Right, right.
At, at the end of the day, the city council, we are the final arbiters of exactly how that money's going to be utilized across all the different agencies that participate in that process. So, in effect, we are already doing that, it's just the information is coming to us in a different way. I have no problem in having another group, we've been doing this, you know, kind of beating it to death, taking a look at it from fresh eyes, as long as it's not just limited to just AVA, ADA, because all the other different portions, the agencies, different agencies get funding also. So, if we're going to say we need to take a look at whether or not Group X and Y are effective, we need to do the same thing for the other agencies also, from AMDEC to whoever else is getting the money. So, it's, I'm troubled by it just being a one-sided, my perception, focus. So, I'd like to hear some more discussion on, you know, how open or not the process may be.
I guess, from, from that perspective, I, I don't have a problem with that body looking at other things. It's just that that body has perspective to marketing that we don't have. And if they want to look at, you know, look at the other stuff, that's fine. I mean, they can look at it and make evaluations. But when it comes to, for example, the equipment fund, I mean, how are they going to know that? I mean, that's, you know.
They have to, there has to be, there has to be.
It's not something that they're going to have expertise any more than we are in that regard.
Which means there has to be an expert on that committee to help make that recommendation to us.
Right.
Well, I think we're getting buried in some detail we don't necessarily need to get into tonight, but the whole TRT, if I remember the, the history and the legislation that was passed, is that, that whatever year that was, the amount of money that you were spending on tourism was the amount of money that you had to spend in percentage of your gross revenue in the future. For an example, if five years ago, that was the base year, we, we had a million dollars and we were spending $700,000 on whatever tourism is defined as, then we are required to spend 70% of all future TRT money on tourism. The other 30% is fungible money. We can choose to either invest it in tourism, special marketing, equipment reserve, police, fire, whatever we want to. But I think we need to go back and reassess and define what that original requirement was, what's currently being funded, take a look at that breadth, then we ask ourselves, what are we trying to do with that money? Are we wanting, do we want to use 100% of it for tourism enhancement? Or do we want to use the, the minimum required that was established in the statute for tourism and have the other X amount be available for other priorities that the city council and Budget Committee ultimately see? So, marketing is only one component of tourism, I think there are others, but I would think that the Public Safety Committee worked so well, and I think it added credibility to the community to, who came back in. I think that Rich's idea would be valid, it would add those fresh eyes, and it would add credibility to the process, and we then have firmly established what the procedures and criteria are.
I think, yeah, Bill.
As I recall, council used to make the decision, or at least review the applications on funding the outside agencies, and then it was broken up. I know that Parks has some of those groups, and the committee was formed for the transit, some of this money. I think that Ray is maybe on the right track of looking at a group that were, to review how all of the transient lodge taxing revenue is being spent. And I think that we can find a group of people that maybe have a little better expertise and a little different cross-sections and so forth than this council. So, it, it's kind of a hybrid. If, if we're talking about the motion that was on the floor that, that failed, if we re-vote on that, I would tend to vote no, but some kind of a hybrid between Rich and Ray of moving forward.
So, what we were, a lot of the discussion that was done last time is, with the budget time coming up, you know, we've got, we've got agencies that are being funded out of these funds, and we've got, you know, our own budget, our own staff needs to be able to set their budgets. And that's sort of where we were looking at, let the council be the review body. We're the ones that really know all the city programs, what all the needs are, because there's a lot out of the TLT that is funding our city, you know, city programs. And a big chunk goes to the Parks and Rec also. We do have for the airport, and we do have for police and fire. And so, it's sort of, it's, it's hard to get an outside group that really doesn't know the whole big picture as we do, being on the council, because we know all of those, you know, everything that's in the budget and what those needs are and those gaps. That's sort of where we came at is with that motion, was just getting the council then to be the review body, and it would expedite the process. Because if we go through another committee, you've got, you've got a time already, you know, going to have it allocated time for accepting applications, the council making a decision for who to appoint for the committee, things like that. And so, we're already coming up on budget times, so.
Mayor, I, I simply disagree with you. If we get this thing started, there isn't any reason why that committee cannot get together and get the work completed. The idea, and what, what you're saying is, let's just give people the same money they get, got last year.
No, I'm not.
I mean, it's, if, if they have a hard time doing it, we have a hard time doing it. We don't have the expertise to do part of it, just like they don't have the expertise to do part of it. We hang up on some things, they hang up on others. I mean, we need to get it started so we can get, get the idea of whether or not this money is spent well. It'd be wonderful it was, but I really don't think it is.
So.
And, and you know, there are lots of examples of that.
Right. But like Kate said, if we're going to be the review body, we can still bring in the consultants and have the council then be that decision maker. So, we can still bring in that information. So, because bottom line then, it's the council that's going to make a decision, you know, after whoever's.
Why don't you want outside people to do it, Mayor?
I was just saying, we'd have some outside consultants to do it, because I.
We have outside people who can do it right now.
So, but, right, but Rich, in all due respect, you're sitting there stacking a committee of who you want to be on the committee.
No.
And.
I would have one vote, just like you would have one vote.
Okay, so then we would go out and we'd want to get, you know, people that each person would want to be able to choose who they want, but it's not going to be putting the names out there and everybody has to choose out of a certain name. We, we would all have our own.
I said people, I didn't say people.
Well, let me offer an amendment to the motion, and that would be that, I agree with Sharon, that for one year and one year only, the council review these requests. And that gives us the time to go ahead and do what you're talking about, Rich.
What we said last year, Bill, and it didn't happen.
I, I don't recall voting on this last year.
No, didn't vote, but that's what we said. And so, what happened, we gave them the same amount of money.
Well, I understand, Rich, it's been going on for several years.
Yeah.
And, so I.
Well, I was just talking to Wes on the side here, and, you know, we set up some artificial timeframes, and the question is, do we need an answer for the decision-making in the forthcoming budget? Or do we run the current process for the forthcoming budget and then have this group be functioning beginning now, some decision at some future time that may span beyond the time that we adopt a budget, but applies to the second year's budget? I think the credibility is more important than pushing the timeframe. So, I would, I would argue, maybe it's a, some hybrid of what Bill has said, that we go ahead and get the committee appointed, give them their task, give them the assignment, let them meet, define a timeframe, give them the scope that we want, let them work, come in, and it applies to the '17 budget.
I'd like to know what happens to the consultant we spend $50,000 on. Are we ever going to get a report from him?
Yeah.
Yes, I had that as a takeaway item to reach out to him, so we're looking to schedule that for one of your January meetings.
He's working on a report.
He, he, he'll be coming before you at one of your January meetings.
And bear in mind, that was. I thought he was going to solve most of this problem.
Just for the.
Well, you know, I think, if I remember, the $50,000 was to the county to hire the consultant to look at marketing specifically the Expo Center, not the community as a whole.
And isn't that the whole complaint about this whole darn thing?
I would say not.
That the hotel motels out there are, are not getting enough multiple overnight people, so they have, they have to change the sheets too often, I think? Wasn't that their complaint?
No, that was not their complaint. Their complaint is that they're getting things only off of the freeway instead of multiple nights. And that means that with six new hotels going in in Eugene, and one going in in Corvallis, and one almost done now operating in Lebanon, and three going in in Salem, those off the freeway people are going to be hit big time. So, the big month, the big numbers that you keep seeing are going to go down, unless we have a gigantic increase in visitors running up and down the freeway.
Well, I guess I'd like to see a downward trend before we throw this.
Well, they're not open yet. They're being built. I mean, you know, part of business is, is looking ahead and seeing what is going to come hit you upside the head next year and the year after. I mean, the head in the sand thing works fine as long as you're an ostrich. Being proactive is what you need to be.
Madam Mayor, if I could point out, too, there's, there's just another basic item that's, that's out here in terms of staff's perspective, separate from the political issues with the TLT, and that is that just right now, we have a budget that you passed that differs slightly from the policy that you have in place. So, at a very basic level, the minimum amount of work is that we, you know, somebody at some point's going to need to take a look at the policy and understand what we need to change so that it matches the, the budget you passed. Now, to Counselor Collins' point, we could certainly do that, taking a little bit longer, especially if the recipients knew that any changes would not be enacted until the '16, '17 budget year.
Okay. So, council, to move us along on this, there is then the motion to have the council be the review body. So, is everyone ready?
Call the question.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. You're going to take a roll call. I think it failed, but.
Counselor Olson?
Yes.
Collins?
No.
Johnson?
No.
Kellum?
No.
Kupczynski?
No.
Wilber?
Yes.
Okay, so that's two to four. Okay, so council, what would you like to do?
I would like to appoint an outside group that does not receive TLT, that does not pay TLT, similar to the Safety Committee that we set out for fire and police. One person from, be appointed by each counselor, and one person be appointed by the mayor.
Okay, so a seven-member group, okay?
And is this, just for clarification, is this a, a permanent committee like our Public Safety Committee, or is this a one?
This is the.
An ad hoc.
Safety Committee, an ad hoc committee, Safety Committee, like we had for fire and police, the BRIGHT, Morse Committee.
Okay, so, all right, now, I thought you were talking about the Public Safety Committee, which is a permanent committee of the city.
And are they, they're advisory, so they won't make the funding decision, they will give you a recommendation?
They will, they will find what the, what the uses are, what the, and come back and make a recommendation to us.
I think one of the key successes of the.
Just a sec, that was a mo, was that a motion?
That was a motion.
Okay, there's not, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. No discussion.
I think one of the key successes to the Safety Committee was the fact that there was two people that were picked with impeccable reputations that went out and did the acquiring, what do you want to call it, of the people, the staff that, to be involved with that committee, that kept it hands-off and allowed council to sit back and say, we don't want to get in deep into it because that we don't want to affect the, the reality of politics, whatever, however you want to call it. So, if we can instructure similarly to get one or two people of impeccable reputation to say, here's the scope of what we, you need to accomplish, find the people to make that happen, then I could say, yeah, let's, let's try and do that.
Jeff Christman?
Whoever, however we arrive at that, whomsoever that may be.
Gee, he may be in a room.
Yeah. And, and I do, it's very imperative that this group really gets the input. You can't just look at the funds. You've got to know what tourism's about. That is an important piece. You've got to know what a downtown is about, how does it function, and you've got to know our parks and recreation. So, and, you know, and then there's the airport, there's the AMDEC piece, all of that. We need to make sure then, who's on this committee is going to really know that. But tourism is the main piece for TLT, and we have to have members that know tourism. So, so that's, that's something you have to keep in mind. Or other words, this, the, the committee won't, the committee can come back and just say, okay, I want you to, you know, chop it up here and there, but if it's not going to be that overall goal of bringing in more heads to beds, then you haven't accomplished anything. So, we have to keep that in mind. You've got to have experience part of this group, but, yeah, Bill and Bessie.
Rich, was it your intent that they get together and do some work and have input into this year's budget, which we are going to remove, review in about five months?
That they get together and give us input as soon as the input is available.
Well, let me rephrase.
That is not to, you know.
Let me rephrase the question.
They're going to need their own timeframe.
I understand. Let me rephrase the question. Do you think it's reasonable that they can get together and give us that input in the next three or four months in preparation of Budget Committee?
Not in total. However, I think there would be things that they would be able to give us information on. That is not to say that they would be able to do the whole job. But just like anything, when you start and you complete the first, the first piece of it, whichever piece that they, that they would start with, if, if you leave it up to the people doing it, so you have no connection, then it's their baby. You know, they, if you give them the goal, and they, then, then they know when it's finished, they come back and give you a recommendation. If that is within the timeframe that they can do it for a piece of the budget, great. And if they can't, it goes however far down the road it goes until they're happy with, that they have made the correct recommendation.
But who picks up the slack at budget time if they're not done?
Well, if, if we don't have the information, we have to go on the information we've got. I mean, they're coming, you know, departments are coming back to us saying, this is what we need. And if there isn't a better, a better thing to have happen, then you, you have to go with what's available.
The good old days, Budget Committee meetings were knock-down, drag-out affairs. Sounds like we may be going back to that, very, same kind of thing. That'll be fun.
Well, the default position is existing policy, and the existing policy is, if I recall, this year's budget plus 3%. So, that's what Wes would build his budget around, absent specific recommendations coming in.
Yes, but you're going to have people coming in with whole new ideas on where to spend the money.
And they're all going to, we'll have a lot of.
And they think they have the AMDEC piece done, then they give us the recommendation on AMDEC. I mean, that's, if they're finished with that piece, if that, this looks like it's working, it doesn't look like it's working, it looks like it's well-spent, say so.
Yeah. But then, if they change that amount, and they don't know, and we don't know the rest of it, then you, maybe they'll up or, or decrease their amount that they're given, then you have to recalculate everybody else. So, I mean, it, you know, either, I think it's all or none. I don't think you can do it piecemeal. But I agree that we need to do it, and, you know, it may be that everything's going to turn out, you know, that everything's, you know, going okay. I don't know. But, I don't know.
I can, I can just really, almost, if we go down this path, I almost will bet some money on, put some money on the table, that not everything is going to be approved by the council of what is recommended to us, and then we're still going to probably upset some folks because they spent some time coming up with the allocation. Bottom line, this council is the one that really knows more of what's going to work and what doesn't. I mean, you look at our TLT, and from when we started the TLT program with the, from the tangent, the task force we had, we've gone from six hundred thousand up to almost a million. So, it's like, tell me where there's a problem. So, I mean, all the players together, working hard, everybody in the tourism is bringing up those dollars. But, I mean, I, I worry about going down this path, and then all of a sudden, maybe somebody is wanting to divert more money off to one of the other programs, and if this, if the council doesn't agree upon it, then we really haven't accomplished a whole lot. Instead of, this council knows all of the budgets, knows all of what city programs are, knows what our gaps and needs are. We know what, what's really needed for our community and for tourism, then it's, we're the ones that are elected to do those hard choices. So...
Mayor, you're just plain wrong. I mean, there are things that the council knows a lot about, and there are things that the council doesn't know a lot about. I mean, marketing is something that there are two people here who know something about it. And I'm not going to tell you, I know a lot. I've done it for thirty-two years, but that doesn't mean I'm the best person at it. I have experience at it. Now, if you look across the rest of the council, who else has marketing experience? If you look at the people who are, are using the money, I mean, hey, they're trying to do the things they're doing. Is it a good idea? I don't know. But, I mean, they had a bus tour. They used money from us to rent a bus, and they took people from Albany to Shed to spend money, and to Harrisburg to spend money, and to Brownsville to spend money, and to Sweet Home to spend money, and to Lebanon to spend money, and then showed off a Lebanon hotel and came back. And that's supposed to impress us? I mean, they showed us how to spend our money someplace else. That is not what they're getting paid for. Now, there may be, a wonderful reason that is, but I don't know anybody here that knows that.
Well, and, and that's not quite totally correct on that, Rich. It was looking at all of the marketing, what could be added through Lynn County, is as we're hearing from Lynn County, is wanting some of our TLT to kind of help the county too. But it was trying to bring people into our region and not just stay overnight, stay in the region and spend some dollars. That was just showing the AVA Board and a few stakeholders, this is an option.
Then why didn't the AVA Board get the money from, from the county? Or from Lebanon? Or from Sweet Home? I mean, my point here is, when you're dealing with marketing, it is something that, that some people know a lot about, and some people know a little bit about. But it is obvious that this body, including me, are not the people who know a lot about it. And so, when you say, well, we're just going to go down the same path and use this, this body to make those decisions, I can't tell you that it's a good idea to do those kinds of things when the people who are taking the money tell you, well, gee, you just can't, you just can't measure that, when people who are in the business say, well, of course you can measure it. It may be that they are doing the most wonderful job there is, but on the outside looking in, it doesn't look like it.
I still say, somebody's doing something right, because we have our figures going up.
And you keep saying the same thing.
They may build motels over in, in Lebanon or someplace else, but if they're coming here to do their tourist thing, they're going to stay here. They're not going to go to Lebanon to come here and watch the county rodeo.
The money is coming from people off of the freeway. That's where it's coming from, the vast majority of it. And when you're bringing people off the freeway, the freeway goes right through Salem with three new motels, and through Eugene with five or six, or whatever that is, new motels.
Well, I thought your complaint was, we don't want those people off the freeway.
We want to have a replacement for them.
I think, Council, you have a motion on the table. Are you guys ready to vote?
Yeah. Almost. But I'm still thinking of the budget. And as I've been on the council since nineteen ninety-eight, Budget Committee was a pretty easy thing back then. But as time has gone along, and the city manager has commented to us each time, that things are getting tighter and tighter and tighter, because we are governed by what we have to pay our union people, and what our tax income is. And now, this year, we've got even more problems with the pervs mess that the court says, well, no, you can't change anything. You've got to pay the people more than they were making when they retired, the ones that are tier one. So, I think it's the wrong time to get in there with an orange, it's kind of stir stuff up, that's going to impinge on our budget. I, I don't, again, I don't see the reason for it. I just don't see it.
I agree. Yeah. So, okay. And there's a motion on the table, and Teresa, would you like to repeat the motion?
Yeah.
Mr. State.
The motion is to appoint an outside group that does not receive or pay...
And it's an ad hoc recommendation committee. Yeah. Okay. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay. I think, go ahead and take a roll call, but I think it was four to...
Collins?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kellum?
Yes.
Kupczynski?
Yes.
Coburn?
No.
Motion passed four to two.
Okay. All right. Okay. Got enough direction on that, Kate?
You bet. And I think we'll expedite getting your applications. We'll work on that and bring it back to you guys as soon as we can, so we can get the committee together.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
I'll talk to you.
So, and, and so with that, actually, the council, you might want to maybe bring to our next work session of really how do they want to have that makeup of the committee? So, and do we want to go out and advertise for people to, you know, be on the committee? Or do we want to just have it self, and, you know, each counselor just go ahead and ask for someone? But I think we probably need to review the scope of that committee.
Mayor, the, the motion said each counselor.
Just a point, so you don't want to go out for public applications?
Oh, well, we can go get whoever, but I mean, it is ultimately, it is each, it is each counselor and yourself.
So, so, yeah, bring that back then, yeah. Okay. There'll be lots of discussion on this item, I can guarantee that. So, hopefully the last time. Okay. And next is business from the council. Bessie, anything this evening?
I'm happy.
Okay. Bill?
Thank you.
Hey, Dick.
I'm honored to be here.
Okay. Rich?
No.
Okay. Ray?
Yes, I would like to congratulate the council on the procedure that we went through to get to the marijuana vote. And I honestly believe that the discussions that we had last Wednesday, I've got an incredible number of emails on the city end, personal side, applauding what I was trying to do. But I think the process has worked just fine, and I think it was simply a matter of Alan Greenspan's irrational exuberance on some of the language that was used at last Wednesday's meeting. It was nothing personal, it was, it's just business, and I applaud the council for going down, following the process. I ended up on the losing end of it, if it wasn't for lack of trying.
All right. Thank you, Ray. So, Floyd?
Following up on Ray's comment, I think one of the things we now need to do, and I'd like to have staff start the process of bringing this back and starting us on the time, place, and manner discussions.
Yeah.
Right after the first of the year, because I think that's going to be critical in the long term. We want to have that in our, in our development code, regardless of what the results of the election might be next November.
Yeah. Another issue that you, I think you'll want to consider is, you have the option of putting a three percent tax on the ballot, which I would recommend that you do, because you don't know whether or not the ban will be upheld by the voters. So, that would be something else to discuss.
But we not let it lag till February or March?
Yeah.
Get it underway in January?
Yeah. What happened with this last issue?
Okay. And the only thing I wanted to mention was the parade was great for last night, and I want to thank Peggy for all of her hard work in getting that coordinated. So, parade was a good turnout, and our Christmas tree, so, is very nice and bright this year. So, thanks to Comcast, but thank you for getting that coordinated, and it was the best turnout I've seen for parade. Yet it rained the whole time, but, but it was the best turnout that we've had, so, which was great. But, so, okay.
Mayor, actually, I would like to commend Peggy for her sticktuitiveness, of someone she is being very proactive, and I like the heck out of that.
Yeah. Great. Thanks. Yeah. Okay. Wes? You don't have any, then staff have anything this evening?
Yeah.
All right. And do we have Cara next week, Kate? We do. Okay. So, we, don't forget Cara next week. But other words, then our next work session is January eleventh, and our regular session is January thirteenth.